Welcome to organized chaos. Just seeing if everybody's actually reading their things before you. Okay, alright, any changes to the agenda?
No, agenda's good.
So we will look at approving, making a motion to approve the agenda presentation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we do not have anything for public comments, communications, so we'll move along to reports. Six point one is board committee reports.
We didn't have any other committees report, are we? No, we had policy.
We did, yep, we did policy last week.
Right, so we have a number of policies and you will notice that there's a few different ones as far as on the policies that, you know, from my email, you have some that it's highlighted if it was previous and then of course anything that was new. And they're giving me a couple of changes that we talked about. And so those were put in purple if I remember right, and then the rest is just all red line. So you should have copies of all of that. And again, we've got them as action items for our first reading, so.
Riley, anything on that one?
On the policy? No, thing was pretty straightforward.
We'll move on to six point two, superintendent report.
Rich and them are gonna be bummed out, they don't get to hear the whole thing. Number of. So. It is that time of the year, lot going on. Some of the stuff I emailed out to you, but these are the latest updates. And I'll hit some things, we'll put them on the screen also. Elementary school principal position, we know that's posted. We got until April 21st. I'm sitting down with Heidi, Peg, and Matt and working on interview questions for it. We are going to have Heidi, we'll have Heidi and Peg like we talked about before. And then you and I will just have to talk only as far as who you want with yourself. And then we'll have a couple from the leadership team from the site, from Glendon on that. So basically a group of six that'll be there for all the interviews. And again, if you're on the personnel committee, remember that 21st is when the deadline for people to apply. And then that way, anytime you want to come in after the 21st, let me know whether it's over the weekend or Monday on the 24th during the day. Feel free. And then that night when we have policy at five, or a personnel committee I should say at five, we'll sit down and we'll have the numbers. We'll work through that in advance, like this candidate number one, two, three, and figure out which ones we want to look at. And you'll have recommendations coming from the principal team also as far as candidates. And we'll just say from the principals group, here's the candidates that they're saying that they think should be considered after everybody's had a chance to look. But so if you have time to be able to look at all of the stuff, it'll all be at the district office. As far as, because again, nothing's public until we come up with finalist list. Any questions on that? We've got a number of apps, busy time because we're getting a lot of apps for elementary teaching positions. And that deadline was last Friday. And I know that interviews are being set up on the facts Heidi has gone and we've got.
Language arts.
Language arts, we've got elementary, lots of things that'll be coming on the 24th. The next one, lots of stuff associated with this. Now, I'm gonna be giving you some maps. I've been meeting with Heidi, Mary Ann, Peg, Joe. We've been trying to go through, looking at the what ifs. So, couple things. So when you look at this open enrollment issue. Two pieces with this. So my, I think we have an option that can fiscally work pretty well to be able to keep the ratios low through grade three. Without it being a fiscal issue, okay? We can actually do this with zero fiscal impact. Okay, now I'll part a whole Harvey's Rest story to make this one happen. Here's what it would entail. So I'm gonna give you three maps and I'll put them up on the screen afterwards so that everybody else can see them. The first one is Dilworth site, first floor. And I'll give you Dilworth site, second floor. And the third one will be Dilworth, sorry, Glendon site. Now, there is, there is an assumption with this, to make this happen. When we did the last session, the last board meeting, we talked about the fact that it would cost two FTEs, teaching force, to get this through grade three. That would be the case if we go with three sections of kindergarten at the Glendon site. The current numbers right now are thirty-six. And that's where we're sitting right now for next year's kindergarten without retention. Looking at approximately four retentions. Talking with Roseanne today. Possibly four yet to be registered, possibly.
And you said, you're talking about Glendon right now?
This is the Glendon site. So, here's the what if. And why I put what I did in my report. If we said we're done with open enrollment at the Glendon site for kindergarten. Again, you don't decide this night, but I need to get an idea in general. Because this will be as we're doing the interviews for elementary and what else not. If we said we're not gonna take anymore in, open enrollment ones, we're okay with our policy. Remember, our policy's one fifty-five and one forty-five for numbers, priority two and one. So if we just said we're gonna have two sections of kindergarten next year. And at a max, we're gonna stick with this idea because we're not gonna take anymore open enrollees in. That'll keep us at up to twenty-two to one at most, okay, on the ratios. That's assuming all of them come in, okay? What that does is currently we have three sections of kindergarten. So when you look at these maps and you look at the Glendon site compared to the old maps that you had from the last meeting. What it does is it moves fifth grade, that sixth section of fifth grade. It allows that to go over into the same wing. So we'll put it up, same one that you guys have there, but just so that everybody else gets a chance.
You guys see it?
Um, I'm going to.
Should we put the blindstone?
It's just, yeah.
It's fine, okay.
Work for vision. Okay, so what it does is on, the other proposal had that this one fifty-seven was gonna be special ed. What this allows is that sixth section to come over here because now you only have two kindergarten rooms. So this third one that was kindergarten can be another specialist area. So you keep the two sections, K, six sections of fifth grade. It now allows you to have a room over here, remember this is a room that was gonna be fifth grade, over here. Now that's your third section of third grade. So that gets ratios all the way through, low ratios through third grade. And because, as you see on my report, last year, or this year, we have eighteen sections at Glendon. It would be projected to have the same amount of sections at Glendon, eighteen. So we can do this without adding a teacher at the Glendon site. Because you're going from three sections of K to two. Everybody follow? Now. In the proposals before, we were assuming three sections of K. And then that meant that we needed two full-time teaching positions to be able to go with those low ratios all the way through third grade. We'll only need to add one. Because we don't have to add one at the Glendon site, we just repurpose rooms. We add one over at the Dilworth site, but now because we're adding one at the Dilworth site, we don't need those three paraprofessionals. That you approved to go into the third grade classroom to offset because they have the larger numbers. The cost of that is eighty-one thousand of the paras. So that's why I gave you those numbers. When you read through the rest of that, you'll see that the cost for three paras is eighty-one thousand. The cost of adding one FTE for the teacher is forty-seven thousand. Now, we're gonna have costs for redoing some classrooms to make this happen. The Glendon site, we're in pretty good shape on. It's the Dilworth, so. Does it make sense when you look at the Glendon one, how that actually helps us to be able to get grade bands in the same areas? Because remember, we had a fifth grade section that was away from the rest of the fifth grade before. Now we're able, because of having just two K over at this site, it moves special ed out of that fifth grade wing, opening up a classroom for fifth grade. Again, no action item tonight. Now the Dilworth site, and then I'll just walk through this stuff. And then let's see what you got for questions. So Mary Ann, Peg, Heidi, and I have been meeting to do the what ifs. And of course, now this one has some changes, but they're good changes as far as helping with. Again, part of the hope is, and I mentioned this one at the last meeting. Here's what it does. Room one fifty. So in the green area, room one fifty, those of you who grew up in Dilworth know that that was an old office. And it's been used for specialist, special ed OTPT, use currently. But if you look at the size of the room, it's exactly the same size of the room as one fifty-two, one fifty-three, and one fifty-five. So what this is gonna allow us to do is move second grade. And second grade had been in one oh-six. Right at the end, right smack dab in the middle of those kindergarten rooms. Now second grade is moved over with the rest of the second grade classrooms. We pull out those temporary walls, the sheet rock and all that in the middle of the rooms. Make it into a regular classroom again. And the special ed, OTPT, and the special ed services that were in one fifty, now will go over to the computer lab area, which is one ten. I also met with Roseanne. All of the supplies for OTPT will go into that special ed suite right next door where Mary Ann has her office area in one twelve. Because all the ECFE stuff for their supplies will go into the ECFE room. Because we moved the cabinets right into that. And in the same way that kindergarten over here, or ECFE over here has their cubbies or whatever they call them.
Their little locker.
Yeah, their little locker deals. The locker deals that are in the ECFE at Dilworth will go right outside in that hallway the same way. And that's what'll allow them to bring in the cabinets and what else not against the walls for all the ECFE supplies.
Is there enough space higher?
Yep, yep. So Roseanne will have an office at this side. She won't have office spaces at both, just like we don't have office space for everybody else, multiple sites. So we can do this, so at the Dilworth site to make that one work. Notice now we got second grade all together, we have first grade all together, we have kindergarten all together. And it opens up room one oh-five, one oh-six. That was second grade, okay? That now becomes third grade, which works out pretty well because third grade is directly up above, so they just come right down the stairway. And now, both sites have low ratios through grade three. And that difference in the cost of the paras, that eighty-one thousand compared to the cost of one teacher, is the money that we'll need to redo those rooms. Because remember, we gotta do the computer lab. And we gotta do the old office area at Dilworth. But we can get low ratios, both sites through grade three, and not have any increased costs. And again, all the players have been involved in this, Roseanne, Joe, Peg, so all the whole admin team has been working on this plan over the past week.
Are we looking at having to let go paras, or are they gonna be able to find natural?
She has needs for new paras.
Well, we had a retirement.
They'd just be reassigned to special education.
And didn't we have someone that had retired?
Yeah, we've so far heard about one retirement for special education paraprofessional. And then I know of, for sure, one child going into kindergarten who needs a one-on-one para, and then there's a few other kids.
You're gonna be asking for more than. These will get reimbursed when there's special ed ones like that. Go that way, because everything that's special ed, we give them reimbursement.
So we have room to move them to a different area, it just won't be a gen ed para anymore, it would be a special education.
And remember that gen ed, we had nothing back from the state to help with that. So that's eighty-one thousand of pure local dollars, no reimbursement. So if those three paras are reassigned to special ed, we're gonna pick up some costs right back on their new site. So I mean, really, this can be a pretty economically efficient plan that gets our ratios where we want it through grade three. The nice part, the Glendon site, again, we've been trying to do planning, okay, then following year. What happens when we have three sections of K at the Glendon site the following year, if we do? We still haven't, here's the thing, let me bring up the Glendon one again. The Glendon site has more latitude, okay? So I just wanna bring it up so I can, so if you think of the Glendon site, here's why it's, why we got more latitude. So we have not, we still have, notice, one fifty-two, music's on a cart, I'm sorry, music is not on a cart, it's still on classrooms. So we still have one fifty-two available. We still have the computer lab area off the library still available for more specialists. So we have both of those without even touching ECFE.
What's one sixty in Glendon?
One sixty at Glendon, one sixty at Glendon is zero in the childhood.
Oh, okay.
So we can still do this at the Glendon site and we don't have to move ECFE off campus. Where all of a sudden we have to deal with our ECSE services if we move it off campus. So we got room.
What are we looking at for music in Dilworth then, for the elementary?
Okay, let me bring that one back. So the Dilworth site.
Come on Scott, join, it was a five-thirty meeting because of choir and there was no choir concert.
Yeah, of course, it didn't get on my calendar.
Don't feel bad.
I don't.
It happens.
I was just surprised everybody's here already.
And my report, what we're talking about Scott is that there's a way of making this work to go low ratios through grade three without it costing us any extra money. How's that sound?
There is?
Yeah. So, because if we go down to two sections of K at the Glendon site, that will make it happen. Because what'll happen is we won't need to add a teacher at the Glendon site because we'll move them over. And at the Dilworth site, the cost of the three paras, the classroom paras that we put in, will more than offset the cost of one more teacher. So fiscally, it'll be a wash. So when you think of the Dilworth site, so the question about music. So a couple of options. Either we have to go on a cart with this, that's not, that's not the recommendation. The recommendation is to reconfigure and to do some things. We've got that big space, we know we've got the band room space at middle school, and we've got the practice room areas. If we utilize that space, then now we don't have the noise issues downstairs. And we have the elementary music in the one part, we have the band in the other part.
Which they should've been together before anyway.
Everybody's not gonna be thrilled with this one, but it makes the most sense, okay? That's just a fact, just know that.
Mary Ann, do you feel that space in one-ten, the lab, that should be efficient?
I mean, it's a little bit smaller, but with early childhood, with Roseanne's office space and then all of her supplies being moved out. That space would house Carrie Krebs, early childhood special ed teacher, her desk, and then Darla Hennan's desk, and then both of their supplies, OT, PT, and then also Carrie Krebs. So our life would pretty much be in that room by herself, we'll still have to have the sensory swing in there and that takes up a little bit of space. And then I just talked with Brian too about ordering the petitions that we can put up so that, just because of the needs of our students and you know, all the one-to-one paras that we have, there's a lot of movement and a lot of people kinda coming and going. And just making sure that people know that, okay, we don't have this separate room where you can go in and shut the door and work with a student. You're gonna have to, you know, just be more aware of the needs of what's going on and teaching that's going on. And for the students, you need to come in, come in, but if you don't need to be in the room, I'll cycle in the room.
I just think it looks a lot better because you had all those doors. How many doors did you have in that room, like two or three?
You come in the door, and then there's a closet, and then they had a partition up to work with some students at a table. And then you go into Arlet's office, and that had a door, and then you go into Darla's office, that had a door. And then you had the open area, but there's just a lot of in and out, in and out. And so I think it's going to be kinda talking about that and kinda what's the structure of the room going to look like.
Are the doors wide enough for wheelchairs? Are we good?
Yeah.
Into that room one-ten?
Yeah.
And it's still on first floor, which is really nice for handicapped accessibility, so that'd be good as well. And just, I think maybe making sure there's storage space and shelving units to be able to place.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted to get it to you tonight because, again, you know the deadline on the elementary stuff was seven. So if this look, I guess what I'm asking for tonight is simply, if this looks like it's making sense to you, then we would just bring it forward for votes on the 24th, knowing that we may be looking then instead hiring the two positions to replace, we'd be hiring three. So when they do their interviewing, you know, because we got.
Say that again, sir.
Yeah, because we've got, we've got two elementary positions. You're gonna have more than the two elementary because we got the sixth grade, we've got the language arts position, we got the avid position, we got special ed positions that'll all be coming. The special ed ones are tonight, two of them. But when you think of the retirement in title and the retirement in fourth grade, so we know we've got two that we have to replace. But we would be looking at, if this looks like it makes sense to you, I would bring three positions for you. And if, at that time you say, you know what, I'm thinking more about it, no, we're not gonna prove three positions. Then you deal with it with the vote on the 24th. But if it looks like this makes sense, then at least we can start that planning because we're in April. And if we're gonna do some tearing out of walls and what else not capital wise, we gotta figure that stuff out, we gotta get it into the schedule. When will this happen, this happen, and this happen? Makes sense? Okay. So, the next one. I want to just hit one more thing on open enrollment on that first page, and again, this is just so that you know what's, and I talked a little bit at the policy meeting about this. It's an issue. So, the state, and we got this actually through the special ed directors, is, the superintendents didn't even get this information. So Mary Ann was more privy than I was about it. The issue on open enrollment associated with ECSE. Now, anybody who's looked at our open enrollment forms, Minnesota Enrollment Options Program knows that you have, you have, if you're a sibling of an existing, it's a higher priority. If you are the child of an employee, that's a higher priority. And the third one, in the past, on the same form, was early childhood special ed. Now, the statute on open enrollment has a subdivision six that talks about that when you created the lottery process. Two thousand and fourteen legislative session is what required every school district in the state of Minnesota to create a lottery process on open enrollment, which we did. And what they had in there in the statute was that you cannot use a disability as a means of discriminating as a basis for looking at lottery. So, the premise with a lot of this was with the idea that, okay, if you have somebody that's an EVD, emotionally, behaviorally handicapped student, and you don't have personal polling, different ones, and saying, no, you don't want this kid, and all of a sudden some are being denied because of a disability. That was in the K-12 world. I talked with the assistant commissioner about this, we had a conference call last, last Friday, I think, or Monday, what, yeah, last Friday. And the problem that is, this has come up, they've created a problem for themselves in their interpretation, and they know it. Because they're taking that disability part and they're applying it to ECSE. Well, the problem is ECSE is only serving special ed kids. So they're saying that you cannot deny an open enrollment if they're going for ECSE. Well, then they shouldn't even be on that list because if you're saying you can't deny it. And here's the problem where they really created, once you've been accepted for open enrollment, you haven't till you graduate from high school. So you can have people circumventing the whole open enrollment issue if they qualify for any speech services, anything like that, or to three. That's a big problem for us potentially. So what MDE, Department of Ed, is looking at proposing is a legislative change which will not take place until next year's session. They wanna put a group together of practitioners to talk about this and get ready for it because they opened Pandora's box. And their goal is to tighten it up so that you can qualify for open enrollment wherever you want to go through ECSE. But that does not give you the right for open enrollment once you hit kindergarten. but that does not give you the right for open enrollment once you hit kindergarten, you have to reapply. If they do that, that's okay, then that takes care of our issue. But otherwise, what we're faced with is, anybody who wants to come into our district, if they qualify for anything, they're guaranteed, even if they're open enrollees, that they cannot be denied to come to DGF. Because they'll get in through ECSE, and no lottery can stop. So this is a problem, it's a year away from being solved. And they just did not anticipate, they didn't, they didn't bring outside of the preschool world into the mix on this. Because legitimately, here's an issue, you could have daycare that can say, you want to be guaranteed to come to DGF, come here, and we will link in special ed if your kids qualify for ECSE services, and you can pick which school district you want to go to. Right while they're in daycare. So it's a huge Pandora's box. So just know, this was something that was not on the radar, it's on, it was on my radar because of our whole open enrollment issue. So I wanted you to be aware of that one. Second page, there's a couple of things, level four programming, we got Mary Ann here, she can also answer questions I have. Again, this is not on the agenda for tonight. I wanted you to be aware of it. This one will take board action, this is something that we should be looking at on the twenty-fourth. Fiscally, it, this is another one of those where you're gonna hear, it's a no-brainer for me, but it, it kind of is, because when you look at the cost, and again, you've got time to read it later, if you look at my condensed notes on it, you'll see that, basically, the way that this is being approached is, half of the cost associated with this would be done through a lease levy associating with spreading the costs. So half of the operation cost will go directly, equally by all schools that are gonna be part of it. Okay? The other half of the cost is incurred only by those districts that have students enrolled in the program that particular year. So if we happen to have a year where we don't have someone in there, we'll be paying our thirty-seven, I'm sorry, initial lease levy cost based on our student enrollment, thirty-six forty-four. Okay? And it's a lease levy, which means, in the same way the YES program, we have lease authority, we have lease levy authority for the YES program. So our kids that go through the YES program for making up ALC credits and what else not, we actually incur a little bit of a levy cost on that. But it's very reasonable when you, when you calculate if we had to, because some of these kids understand, when you have these low incident areas, we may hire a one-to-one teacher to work with that student. So now, instead of having to do that, look at our cost, thirty-seven thirty. It's right there in Morehead, we transport the student there, they get their educational services right there, and instead of spending forty, fifty thousand dollars for a one-to-one teacher, and then find a location, for the full year, it's only thirty-seven thirty. So economically, it really is one of those, it's very efficient. Every school district in our co-op is doing resolution signing to go on with this.
Does that include transportation costs?
No.
Okay.
No. No, but, you know, when, when we think about the fact of how much, you know, like most of our students bring in around nine, you know, with this, we're coming out really well when you do comparative analysis with it. So, read through it for now, if you have questions, you know, Mary Ann's here for them also, she's gone to a meeting, she went to a second meeting.
Yep, just went on Friday to another region for a director's meeting, at the East Country Service Co-op in Fergus Falls. And a good part of our meeting, which was about four, four and a half hours long, half of it was talking about the level four programming and developing criteria, entrance criteria, exit criteria, because I think one of the biggest concerns is, if we do have a student, what happens if Morehead's taking up all the slots? People want to make sure that things are looked at very fairly, and that they will have a board that looks at all the new students coming in, and have they met the criteria? And then we have to decide based on need, is it gonna bump someone else who's on a waiting list? Because as of right now, they're looking at sites in Alex, Morehead, and Fergus Falls, and they're looking at eight slots per site for students, and they think that they'll be able to fill those eight slots just like that, so they'll, more than likely, there'll be a waiting list. And they, they're looking for buy-in for it, because those who don't buy in, they don't want them like, oh, all of a sudden I have two kids, I could use your service, now I want it. And we've had buy-in, let's say for five years, and we've used it one time. So they're looking at, you know, fairness and equity as well, so that people just can't, all of a sudden they need it, now they want buy-in.
Have you toured the facility?
No, they just talked about the facility last week. Originally, they had talked about using that old Globe building, and now, because Morehead has a new elementary school that's going to be opening this fall, they're looking at Probst Field site, that they would have this program at the Probst Field site in Morehead. They need to do some fixes with some security on doors and that type of thing, but very cost-effective for the co-op to be using Probst Field. The co-op does have, I believe they were talking about the old YES building, but it's in really bad shape, and just the cost to even renovate that building, it's almost not worth it, it'd be better off just building a new one. But being that there's going to be room at Probst Field because of all the kindergarteners going back to their elementary schools, that they would have the room at Probst Field.
Okay, thank you.
And so far, out of the thirty-four districts, there's been twenty-three districts who have for sure said, yes, we have buy-in. But really, it's more like, I think, twenty-eight districts, because those other districts already have their own level four programming, so they aren't going to buy into it because they have their-
So, read through it, take a look, if you have more questions about it, but I would be looking at bringing this, it's a resolution that the board has to pass. Very similar to the whole process of this with the YES program. So it, it's one of those, these are the examples of the good things being involved in co-ops. Because you're fine until you need the service, and then when you need it, it gets extremely expensive.
And they are looking at expanding, because right now in Morehead, they would be looking for elementary EVD, level four programming. In Fergus Falls, they're looking at middle school to high school, level four EVD programming. And then in Alexandria, they're looking at level four ASD, autism spectrum disorder, level four programming. So each site is looking at a different area of programming, but they'd like to expand that programming at each site as everything gets developed, so down the road, so that we're talking about even more level four programming for students.
So there'll be more sites, Morris, I think, in Detroit, like, so the other two, it's in the report that you have. Okay? One of the other ones, the next one, the Rural Minnesota Concentrate Employment Program Service Proposal. We have that program in place right now, we have someone coming from the Workforce Center of DL, works at the high school level, right now in, in the career area. We, they are looking to expand it. Now, you'll notice I've got thirty-seven, let's see, the cost for our district is three thousand. Again, the cost is pretty minimal, assuming that all of the grants, they get their grants. Because the actual cost is about seventy-five hundred per school district, but they're expecting forty-five hundred of it to be picked up by the existing funds that they have left with the auto Bremmer carryover funds, because that's what helped offset this cost. And then also with the North, with the West Central Initiative Foundation and the workforce development funding. What we'll get, and what we'll get is a hundred and fifty hours. So for three thousand dollars, we're getting a hundred and fifty hours. And they're actually looking at expanding it so that we can utilize those services in the middle level and the high school, so it goes really well with our college career readiness components of world's best workforce. Goes hand in hand. So, this is something that Matt, Heidi, most likely Katie, will, will pull in and just continue, okay, what makes the most sense for us? Because what they're doing is, with this new model that they're proposing, because they're expanding the amount of schools that they're gonna service, and then basically they're giving you a menu of services that you can utilize for the hundred and fifty hours. Some of them might be parent meetings, so like if you have certain things on FAFSA night that you want to have a resource in, if you want to have certain things with seniors only, you want to get into the middle level. If you want to have, at the middle level, to have the students do job shadowing and things like that, they'll help with that through the Workforce Center. So there's some good stuff here for three thousand bucks to potentially affect both middle school and high school. Talking very little funds for what we're getting out of it. And again, we already do it, it's just the model's gonna change a little bit. Last item, one of, there's two left, I guess. Second to last, legislative update. You've seen the stuff coming from MREA, MSBA. These numbers that I have came directly from the Department of Ed over the weekend. And these are based on the three proposals Governor, Paulsen, Senate. And so what I did, I just pulled it from all of that stuff, and you can see that, the reason I had to do it in those multiple lines the way I did, is you notice that the Governors had, the Governors' proposal has, they all have some on general ed. In other words, the general ed just means your pupil unit amount went up. Okay, and that's where I think a lot of you have seen the one and a half percent, the two percent, the one point two five, that's on the base aid. The big difference is, is the rest of this. Notice the Governor has some money to affect the issue with special ed, as far as the disparity, the fact that we're widening that each year. So they've thrown some money on from the Governors' proposal. Pension, Governor threw on, the Governor did put money in voluntary pre-K, but notice, we're not applying for it, there's space. So that's why I've just put zeros all the way through it, because DGF won't see any money for it. So does it break my heart if they move the money over to something else? Not one bit, because we're not gonna be able to utilize it. So if, when you have the conversations, when you hear, if you get, you know, phone calls from anybody asking, you know, they'd like to know, or surveying you, what's of most importance. Voluntary pre-K is not gonna help us right now, because we don't have space. So if we'd want it on anything, put it on the formula, because that affects everybody equal, based on the amount of kids you have. That's the number one thing for us. You can see what the House has, some money in school readiness, pathway two grants, Roseanne, I talked about it at that last meeting, that we have fifty-some thousand for pathway two. Notice that it's in parentheses, because we'll lose that money. If the House proposal goes through that fifty-seven thousand that Roseanne has already received word that we've been accepted for it, that'd be gone. And the Senate, the only thing that they have is general ed aid, period, that's it. So they, they have the least. And you can see the totals, not the least amount of money, but the least programs. So the Governors got eight hundred eighty-eight thousand over the biennium for us, the House, four thirty-seven, and the Senate, five forty-five. Any questions on that? I'll keep updating you as we get more information. As the, as it, as this goes to committee between the House and the Senate, which it will, then they'll start fine tuning between the House and the Senate's numbers and get those closer. Okay? Last. Basically ran out of time, now I'll give you a third page, so it came down to on this one. The Clay County Evaluations, payable two thousand eighteen. This one, if you have not looked, hopefully you have had an opportunity to look at your green sheets, because everything I've seen has been a minimum of fourteen percent increases, all the way to thirty-two percent valuation increases. It's not affecting this year's taxes, of course, these are the valuations for two thousand seventeen payable eighteen. So when will this go into effect? When everybody gets their initial statements next fall. In November for payable eighteen. And what they did was, I met with, you know, the auditor's office and the assessor's office, this was a correction year on residential. So where Morehead's had constant sales on property on residential, the rest of the county hasn't had as much. I talked to Scott Leslie from Barnesville today, and he said that they were seeing fourteens. Felton is seeing fourteens.
Yeah, Jeff thought about twenty percent, ours went up.
And I'm sure you haven't seen a sale for a twenty percent increase in value, but what they've done is they've applied it across the rest of the whole municipalities in Clay County, based on the sales around here. So that's not great news for anybody going for any type of a bond project. And we might speak transparent about, I mean, there's, it's no point to try to paint that and wait for those statements to come out in November, rather write no-bye. So, and so we can at least plan for the whithits. So, any questions on that? Timing was not great, but it is what it is and it's reality. It was news to some of the other people that, I just looked at the green sheet and they're just shocked, and so I, I looked for that one right away, because you know, that's what's gonna affect our following years. Most people look at the white sheet, just the taxes, and valuation's the one that's a kicker. So, any other questions for me? That should be the longest part of the meeting, I'm sure. That's it.
So any more questions on that, one is on the seven point one, the December of March point seven, anyone? I will go completely, there are seconds.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say add.
All right.
Right.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to eight point one, consent agenda, and which is not here. We have in fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And we have donations from Jared's Plumbing, an amount of a hundred dollars for summer rec, Myron Canoto, two hundred for summer rec, Dorlance Lyons, one thousand, summer rec, Morgan Township, one hundred, Bell Bank, fifty dollars, and this one is for post-prom, Moore Engineering, one hundred for post-prom, American Crystal, ten movies and five free popcorns for pop, for post-prom, The Salon Professional Academy, eight hundred for post-prom, Shields.
Eighty.
Eighty. Correction.
What did I say?
Eight hundred.
Oh, I forgot it'd be eighty. Sorry. I forgot that little dot there. Okay, eighty for post-prom, Shields, fifty dollars for post-prom, Northland Dental, fifty dollars, post-prom, Monsanto, thirteen hundred, and this is a donation for the science department, a donation from Hornbacher's for fifty dollars for post-prom, a donation from Daily Shover Light, for three light, oil changes for post-prom, Fire Department of Dilworth, two hundred for summer rec, Roland Township, five hundred for summer rec, Mike Clark, I'm allowed to two hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents for boys' basketball, senior basketballs. Mike Clark, an amount of two hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents for boys' basketball, senior basketballs. Rebel Booster Club, an amount of two hundred for National Honor Society. And Clay County Farm Bureau, twelve books for the third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms. Proofing the retirement for Darryl Belka, transportation driver, effective June thirtieth. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Any questions on any of those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Moving on to nine point one, the policies. So this is the first reading of the policies. Uh four twenty, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections. Five oh six is student discipline. Five oh nine, enrollment of non-resident students. Five oh nine point one, out-of-state tuition. Five oh nine point two, open enrollment lottery process. Five fourteen, the bowling policy. Five sixteen, the student education. And five twenty, the student service. And this is the first reading.
Isn't that technically just five oh nine? Because five oh nine point two is the lottery process, right? Oh, we've got it. All right, never mind. I'm clear. We're good.
Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Raleigh? Is there a second? I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point two, the certified contract for Anthony Verdi, Special Education BA Step Seven, um at the beginning of the twenty seventeen eighteen school year.
So moved.
Hi Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hi Amy. Any questions? Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Nine point three, uh contract for Kristen One, special, special education BA Step Six, also at the beginning of the twenty seventeen eighteen school year.
So moved.
Hi Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point four, the equipment disposal. It's kind of a mess and so we'd rather not do paper plates since that's the rest of the school year. So this is to approve the purchasing. No, this is a disposal. Sorry, that's, I jumped the gun, nine point five for that. This is the disposal. Jake has a sheet in here um of listed items that cannot be refurbished. And so it's just a process that needs to do. Anything that has special ed dollars has to be accounted for. So you see that you're not giving away an item, it needs to be accounted for. Do I have a motion for proof?
So moved.
Scott. Hi Scott, and Amy, you seconded it?
Yep, I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, I'm sorry, nine point five.
Here is, oh, you brought copies, yeah?
Yeah, just in case, I didn't know. So I got uh three different types of dishwashers, bids for, or quotes from three different companies, Culinex, FSA, or Food Services of America, and Cold Papers. Um we got a Hobart dishwasher, Champion dishwasher, and American Dish Service. The cost of each dish machine includes a booster heater. Um our dishwasher water temperature has to reach at least a hundred and eighty degrees. And in order to achieve this, our dishwasher requires a booster heater. Um Champion and American Dish Service has one-year parts, labor, and travel time warranty. And Hobart Machine has one and a half year part labor and travel time warranty. Um and I would like to make a recommendation to the board that we purchase a Hobart dishwasher for the Glendon Kitchen. Um it's a brand that's built very well, it lasts for years. I spoke with the food service director at West Fargo Public Schools. Uh she has sixteen different machines um at each of her schools and all of them are Hobarts. She said, um and she also was a previous food service director for long-term care facilities. And all she ever had was Hobarts. So she highly recommended them. Obviously, she doesn't work for any kind of rep, so it was nice to talk to someone that didn't have an angle on it. Um and she said she's had really great luck. And um I talked to a staff from the Minnesota Department of Ed. She also used to be a food service director at a school district for many years. And she said that she has only ever seen Hobart machines. She said, obviously, they are usually the most expensive, however, they do last for years. And then finally, I talked to a food service director at the Eventide, the new Eventide out in Fargo. And they also have a Hobart machine and she says that the dishwasher works great. And the service for them is really, really well. Um the Hobart machine, they have expert salespeople or service people based right here in Fargo. So if we ever, you know, have an emergency or whatnot, they're right here in town. And we have definitely experienced how great their help is um just this year with the touch and go with the booster and then it finally went.
How far out would it be if we ordered it?
Um two to three weeks about. That's the, that one is the shortest timeline. Um if we went through, you know, Food Services of America, they gave me a minimum of four weeks. Um so that's almost the end of the school year. And then American Dish Service is about three weeks as well, so. And that's the, the ordering and the shipping and the actual, you know, installation is gonna be about two weeks.
How long have we had this current machine in Glendon here? Do you know how old it is? Did you say it was like since the addition, twenty-seven years?
I don't think we can find out anybody who actually knows, to be honest.
It's like in the nineties.
Maybe since.
What brand is it?
Yeah, what brand is it?
The same one.
It is a Hobart.
It's a Hobart.
Oh, wow.
I mean, it's one of those where.
Don't buy junk.
Exactly. And and you know, the warranty. I was hoping that the warranty would be a little bit longer, but then again, you know, Chelsea did a great job just checking around because I said, you know, there's enough of a difference in cost. We need to know that this is gonna last. But it is pretty much the standard.
They don't make things like they used to make them in the nineties. And so, you know, you look at, Maytag used to be just top end. And and it's been taken over by other people too. And so I'm kinda apprehensive on just going with the name because it it's, it's what we had in the nineties, it's not the same. You don't have your harvest gold appliances that last thirty-five years because they designed things to last seven years and then you replace them and then you buy something else. So but um I like that you did a lot of research on that, so that's helpful knowing that.
It was, the West Fargo director was in my mind key because they have so many new schools and new dishwashers and old dishwashers and they've stuck with Hobart and they've had really good luck and.
And the other companies aren't local as far as servicing them and I know you said Hobart, this one is out of Fargo.
I've heard mixed results because from one rec, they say they're local and another rec says they're not local. So I don't know who to believe, but I know for sure Hobart is based here in Fargo, so.
We went and looked last meeting, what, last Monday night?
Policy meeting, yeah.
Um so you've got the washer and then, of course, the section off next to it's where that we were kinda wondering if the wires were shut off. I mean, it looked pretty bad. So I'm assuming it's the unit itself and that unit next to it?
That is the booster.
That's the booster, so the table and everything, it's a two-piece thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, but then, you know, it depends on the brand. Like the Hobart one, this brand new one, it's gonna be built in. You won't have this separate.
The secondary.
Yep.
So are we gonna replace that first section ahead of it then, where the current booster is, or just take that booster out of there?
Just take the booster out.
Okay.
Yep.
I agree with Scott. I I don't, I don't think it's worth our time to buy something that's, you know, not good quality. So I would make a motion to approve the Hobart dishwasher based on Chelsea's recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. Uh ten point one, we have a Disco Personnel Committee meeting, um Monday, the twenty-fourth. And that's at five o'clock in Deworth. The board meeting is at six o'clock, our normal time, also at Deworth. Anything else?
If anybody um completed the March Madness challenges, did anybody do the green sheets?
I know, I said I, I did the work, but I did not.
The workout, March Madness? You look confused, no.
Yeah, I don't know what that was.
No, it was the green sheet. So if anybody has them, I will email Kimberly Wally. If not, I'll just tell her that thank you for the invite and we participated, just didn't fill it out, so. That's all I have.
And then there's the Community Ed Steak Fry on the twenty-first.
First, April twenty-first.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That's Friday.
Home Run is in May fifth.
Yeah, the Dollars for Scholars Color Run.
What time is the steak?
Starts at six o'clock.
Do we purchase tickets ahead of time?
Yep, you're first, you're purchasing tickets ahead of time. If you can't, you um can just put in an order and pay the money and you get them.
Okay. Is there a thing online that you can?
No, we have our community advisory council members or community ed office.
Is it sold out yet?
And how much per ticket?
And then we did add on the bottom here, we have our board work session, April seventeenth, next Monday night.
Next Monday night. And I met with uh Terry last Thursday, if I remember. It's all kind of a blur. Um and I'll be meeting with him again this week. We have a conference. We all meet at Sandy and we have a period of run, run by.
That's here, in Glendon?
And this is phase three?
Yeah, it's phase three and it's a lot of the goal setting. Uh and the associated everything about uh eval process and what else not. So they'll all go hand in hand.